We appreciate everyone's patience tonight. We're starting a little late. We had closed session that took a little longer than expected. So I'm going to call the July 8, 2019 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Gibbs, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you can.
Good evening, everyone. As we, the commission, and you, the residents and business owners, come together tonight with the goal and aspiration to make the best choices for the city, best choices for the city as a whole, bringing safety and responsibility to the forefront, we do all of this and make all decisions in the best efforts of following the city charter. May God bless us all. Amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. I've been drinking?
All right. This brings us to item number four on tonight's agenda, which is public comment. Just a few notes about public comment. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow residents to help make its decisions. Now's the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issues, whether or not it's on the agenda tonight or not. As there are no public hearings scheduled for tonight's meeting, this will be the only time for the public to address the City Commission. I ask that comments be directed to the Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight, either at public comment or at the public, or we don't have a public hearing, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor. Come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Be mindful that the City Commission wishes to hear from anyone who wants to speak tonight, so we have a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, no problem. We get emails all the time with people inquiring about things about the city, and that's not an issue at all. Please note that the City Commission will not respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes and refer and address the questions when we talk about the topic, if it's on the agenda. If it's not on the agenda, then we refer to the proper city department head to look into and make sure we have follow-up. And our Assistant City Manager, Corrigan O'Donoghue, is here tonight, taking notes as well. So with that, who's first? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Judy Lewis. I live at 1009 South Washington Avenue. On behalf of my neighbors and my family, I would like to share our concerns with the proposed development at 1003 South Washington. First and foremost is the environment. The building is just too large for the property with no green space. Anything being built in 2019 should set the standard for forward-thinking environmentally. The underground parking and flat roof will cause problems with water and existing structures. Too many variances are being overlooked. When I was at the planning committee a few weeks ago, a few things were mentioned from the Royal Oak Charter, and it seems that this building is breaking some of these. No retail on the ground floor, building size to name a few. And it makes me wonder, why are there rules and regulations of the city of Royal Oak, why are they not being followed? What's the point of having rules then? Please don't rush into this. This is our neighborhood. None of you live there. Demand more of your developments. This building needs to be modified. It needs to be green, one that will make all of Royal Oak proud, pride over profit. And also, please note that either this November or the next few years, we are all voters, and we do remember. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Mr. Harrison.
Commissioners, Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford. It's time to reestablish the LCC, otherwise known as the Liquor Control Commission. Now we've had a significant assault after 2:30 a.m. at a late-night pizza place. How many of you are aware of which bar this perp rolled out of? Nobody, I figured so. They didn't come all the way from Flint to buy pizza at 2:30 in the morning. I'm aware of one after-hours restaurant that now closes at 11:00 because they had tired of the people that were coming in and causing a ruckus in their building. The last time I was here, I identified the common denominator of trouble as the music venue and party rooms. I'm aware of two bars that changed their music because what they were playing was attracting troublemakers. You need to get this under control before Royal Oak's reputation of being a safe city changes. Those of us that have businesses downtown and own rental property, this is our neighborhood, and we open our neighborhood to the rest of Royal Oak and the communities around us. Downtown cannot be continued to be managed like a B western, where the saloon owner runs the town, while the administration is the enabler. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Who's next? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jean Hannah, and I reside at 1005 South Washington. So we chose Royal Oak over Birmingham and downtown Detroit because it is a unique, growing, and vibrant city with charming neighborhoods and surrounding a great town area, a great downtown area. While we welcome the growth and additional housing being built in the area, I believe Royal Oak should only support developers who build properties that fit or enhance the surrounding neighborhood. The area today is surrounded by nice and historic single-family homes and new, beautiful apartments and townhouse rentals like 855 and the Griffin, to name just a few. Developers should provide an environmentally friendly place to live, attractive to people who will take care of their property, contribute to the economics of the downtown eateries and establishments, and respect the neighborhood around them. We do not think this will happen with tiny apartments densely crowded into a small lot with inadequate parking. This development plan violates nine ordinances and compromises the city's mission to provide a safe, healthy, and sustainable community. Washington Avenue is a special location to Royal Oak because of it being right off 696 and leading right into downtown. The street is where many people make their impression of Royal Oak, and the remaining properties along this street should be given very careful consideration in their development. Please do not approve this proposal. The commission should expect better from the developers, who will take a permanent spot on the main avenues of this wonderful city. I also would like to speak on a personal note. We are actually the closest and would be the closest to the building, and it would be within arm's reach. And honestly, we pay tab dollar to, you know, to have a beautiful view of the city, and it's going to be, I mean, ginormous. It's going to be a lot higher than where we are, and it would cover the whole entire view, and that is basically the reason why we bought this place. It will also bring our value of the property, it would bring it down a lot. I would just hope you guys would consider this and really think of, you know, where we're coming from. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Who's next? Ms. Wagman.
Janice Wagman, 600 Wellesley. Despite having expressed on numerous occasions the ADA violations in the east side of the farmer's market parking lot, nothing has changed, unless it happened this afternoon. It wasn't as of noon today. For at least 11 weeks now, the pain has faded so severely that people are parking in the access aisles, and either there's been no signage or illegal signage, according to the Department of Justice ADA standards. The ADA sign specifications are very clear. Amazingly, our sawhorses with handicap signs are not an option. The handicap parking in the structure will not be used to shop at the market by the majority of the people who qualify for handicap permits, any more than they use the handicap spaces in the far southwest corner that's been sighted of the farmer's lot, farmer's market lot. True legal handicap spaces, according to the ADA, shall be located close to the entrance of the facility. Also, I want to thank you for approving the DDA's proposal to add angled handicap parking in the downtown. It was long overdue. It should not have taken a public outcry to point out the lack of accessibility, especially considering some of you are seniors or have parents and family members who are seniors, and especially after the demise of so much of our convenient surface parking in favor of parking structures. As I told you in the DDA, I contacted the Department of Justice and the State of Michigan to confirm that, unlike parking lots, there are zero standards for on-street handicap parking. Nothing is illegal. That is why Birmingham was able to implement parallel handicap parking spaces in their downtown by painting the meters and lines in the pavement blue and put up signs. And in my discussion with the city engineer of Birmingham, the ADA problems that they have encountered related to the sidewalks, not their handicap parking spaces. I urge the DDA to reconsider adding parallel handicap parking per your direction, and you to eventually approve it, so the less able are able to visit what now is inaccessible. Lastly, we have a Parks and Rec and Senior Advisory Board, who has focused almost exclusively on parks and rec only for many years. The 15-month-old senior task force has held six community engagements to assess the needs of seniors and had a total turnout of only 94 people. Clearly, the word did not get out. They need a budget in order to contact seniors directly. One of our own city surveys clearly states the majority of seniors want information in their mailbox, not on the Internet. Taxpayer dollars and city workers' time has been spent on many surveys, many, many surveys, both online and direct mail, but I've seen no budget for the senior task force. You need to provide funds so their community survey can be considered valid and the resulting plan meaningful. Otherwise, bring back the senior advisory board to hit the ground running on known issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagman. Who's next? Mr. Halleck.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tom Halleck, 210 North Center. One of the things to consider when you're looking at 1003 South Washington and other facilities like this is you now have another one that is proposed over on parent. And with the real advent of new urbanism on this commission, you're going to be cramming more and more of these in there. They're all parking deficient, and as anybody who lives around multifamily that has gotten waivers, they know that when there's parties or anything like that, there's a massive overflow of parking all over the place, because not only is there not enough parking for the building, there's absolutely zero parking for any of the visitors. So as you put these in, one after another, down in that area, you're going to create a massive parking problem of your own creation, simply because you're not paying attention to what the cumulative effects are of waiver after waiver after waiver. The idea that has been floated with the planning commission meeting with the Zoning Board of Appeals, to change all the standards to lower the amount of parking and increase the amount of height available, where the people can go in and just sign for a five-story building by permit with no hearings, is hardly a solution. You're rewriting city ordinances to give developers whatever they happen to feel like at this time. That is a backwards way of zoning. You tell zoning, you tell developers what you will take in your city, and they either build or they don't. But you do not rewrite all of your ordinances to hand away whatever they feel like doing at this particular time, and that's the direction that this body is going right at the moment, and that's a very severe mistake. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Halleck. Who's next? Is that Mr. Wolf I see there?
They used to call this the silly season. It's not silly. This is a very serious season. First, I would like to commend the experienced resident-first mayoral candidate, opposing Mayor Fournier, Stephen Miller, and the three resident-right-supporting commission candidates, who were bravely trying to create a change once and for all, to put a finger in the dyke. Recently, not, not, it wasn't too long ago, I discovered union members who have benefited from the reckless spending of the city in helping Mr. Bojji, and admitted they, who admitted they were being paid $13 an hour to collect signatures, nominating signatures, for Mayor Fournier, Perush, Dubuk, and a new recruit, Norales, that is obviously, has been recruited to try to take votes away from Randy LaVassar, who is one of our more vocal opposition, and I, unfortunately, in my opinion, too polite, too polite in his opposition. Tonight, I witnessed a PBS program for a short while on the problem of opioids. It was stated clearly by several victims of the opioid epidemic, who went on to use heroin, that the drug that first got them there was marijuana. And I'm not saying all marijuana drug users are going to go take the heroin highway, but what's going to happen is, you're going to have people, you're going to draw people to the city, a demographic of drug dealers, that can hide a few opioid pills in their pocket and enter these marijuana dispensaries and tap somebody on the shoulder, and they say, "If you want something better, see me." The crime that's going to be, in other words, talk about Dodge City, talk about a grade-B western movie, I still can't fathom why sane, educated people would want to invite into a family-oriented city with a fabulous library and volunteers trying to improve our community, a business that sells a product that dulls the brains of developing youth. And I know this from experience, because I grew up in the '60s. I even worked part-time for High Times Magazine indirectly, as a rep, not for the magazine, but for their, their other softcover books and things that they wanted to sell, and I managed to unload a lot of stuff for them right here in Michigan to stores like Little Professor.
Mr. Wolf, I do need you to finish your last point, sir.
I know. You always need me to finish it.
Well, it's three minutes. We title everyone to three minutes.
You'd rather see me finish, period.
I'd rather be equitable than everyone, sir.
Residents, think this time. Forget political party, okay? And vote for the right people that will help steer this city back to what, back on the course it needs to be steered to.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
This city has been hijacked by Ron Bojji, and it needs to be taken back.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. All right. Who's next? Yes, ma'am.
I have your hand out. Pamela Lindell, 409 Inglewood. I'd like to say, first of all, well done to the committee who put together Rock and Rides. We had perfect weather, well-attended event. I'm sure we'll do it in the future. I'd like to use this opportunity for a public service announcement. The Royal Oak was camera, the Royal Oak Animal Shelter is having a couple of fundraisers. It's been brought to our attention that it will be, could be, probably will be closing, the shelter will be closing, a year from now. Lack of funds. So I organized a fundraiser. That's going to be the Tuesday, July 16, Texas Roadhouse. If you dine in or carry out in Madison Heights, the 12, north of 12, John R. Just show them this flyer. Take a picture of it on your phone, walk in with it, carry out or eat there. We'll get 10% of the proceeds. I did this last fall. We did rather well. We didn't make bags of money, but it's better than a poke in the eye. And then we have another one coming up, that second sheet. This is actually before that one, so I went in the wrong order. Okay, this is the football club soccer, and it's the Oakland County group, but they play in Clausen, because that's where they have an arena at. And if you go on their site, Oakland County Football Club, and you put in purple shelter as the promo code for a ticket on July 13, we get $2 from every ticket. So that's pretty nice. And they also encouraged us, if we'd like, if we had enough volunteers to do this, to come, bring our loot, our T-shirts, our homemade cookies, our catnip socks, and we can sell that stuff, too, and raise some money. So I hope to see you all there, because I'll be at both of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lindell. I just want to thank the Royal Oak Animal Shelter and all the volunteers as well. We got our little guy from there, and it's a well-run facility, and, but just to make sure that everyone's clear, there aren't any plans to close down the animal shelter in a year, two years, five years, one year, six months. So, you know, if there's a issue with fundraising, I think the conviction of this commission here would be to figure out a resolution to continue to keep it open. So I don't want anybody to panic or, you know, not adopt dogs or anything like that, because they think it's, it's absolutely not closing. So I just want to, in case there's rumors out there.
Can I get that writing?
You just got it verbally from the mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else tonight? All right. We're going to close public comment, and we're going to redirect the meeting back to this side of the table, where we will head to Agenda Item Number Five, which is Approval of the Agenda. Commissioner Perush.
I'll move Approval of the Agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Perush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. All right. With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. That brings us to Item Number Six, which is the Consent Agenda. Commissioner Gibbs.
I'd like to pull Item Number F, Item Letter F.
Perfect.
Off of the Consent Agenda, please, and add it to the bottom.
Well, we'll, yeah, okay. What we'll do is we'll add it to 6.A. or whatever. Not 6.A., but it'll, we'll talk about it.
Immediately after.
Yeah, immediately after we approve the Consent Agenda. Commissioner Dubac.
I'd like to pull Item L.
L. Okay. L's been pulled. Anybody else wish to pull anything off the agenda this evening, the Consent Agenda? Okay, so that leaves us with City Commission meeting minutes from June 10 to June 24. Claims from July 2 to July 5. Approval of purchase orders. Approval of the 2019-20 Royal Oak Youth Assistance Agreement for Services. Declaration and disposal of surplus property. Approval of fire prevention fee schedule update. Department of Public Services request to fill vacancy. Approval of Justifax Credential Verification, Inc. agreement. Approval of SSDC Service Corporation agreement. Approval of contract modification, Norman Eelix Professional Services Agreement. Receive and file non-action items, which is the June 2019 investment report. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Dubac. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion on the Consent Agenda. All right. With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. This brings us to Letter F of the Consent Agenda. Commissioner Gibbs, Approval of Special Event Permit. Vegan and vodka.
I have some concerns about this special events permit. My understanding, and I spoke to a number of the restaurant and business owners in the area, is that they were never made aware, except for the manager of the PNC Bank, but none of the other businesses were made aware, and we are putting, or the permit allows for a recycle or garbage area to be right in six spots on a business day for these businesses, and the PNC Bank is, in fact, open on the weekend, Saturday morning at the very least, and that would take two days away from their allowable parking. There's a number of other things, and I see that we have a couple of the business owners here in the, in the audience. I'm not sure that we can ask them to speak, but I guess that's it.
Commissioner LaVassar.
I think the concern, and I think it's, it's a great opportunity, but the concern is making sure that we are showing due respect to the existing businesses that are impacted by this. And I received complaints from a couple that, that no one came to them and asked how this might impact their business, or what could be done to accommodate them. You know, looking at the, at the proposal, I note that the recycling area in a private parking lot behind one of the businesses, it's not even public land, and it was expressed to me that that was not coordinated with that business owner. Then we have another couple businesses next door to that, that have their elevator access solely through the entryway on that alley. They're concerned if they have weekend deliveries, or if they have persons with mobility issues that need to get to a doctor's office on the second floor, whether they're going to have easy ability to get to that, that entryway. So, you know, my concern, I'd like to find a way to get this done. I simply want there to be better outreach to the business owners impacted when we have a proposal like this.
Commissioner Dubac. Get your hand up.
Yeah, I just, it looks like this application's in coordination with the Restaurant Association, so there are businesses that are actually spearheading this. Is that accurate, Chief?
Yes.
Can you speak a little bit to who directly is involved and how they got wrapped in?
Yes, this was an event we've been working with, primarily Chef Johnny, who's in the audience, and it's sort of evolved, although we're trying to figure out how to make this event occur. The Restaurant Association was involved, Chef Johnny's involved. As to which businesses were actually notified and when, I can't speak to that, I just don't know. We did get this completed pretty much at the last minute, so if there's details regarding garbage or things like that, that's something that the special event coordinator could work out moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, really what we're, I have no problem addressing a couple of those issues. I think none of them are insurmountable. If there's a, I mean, I think if we were to approve this, giving direction to staff or the organizer to say, "Hey, can you work out some issues with the recycling area," or, you know, I'm sure if somebody has to get to the, but we do this all the time with Arts Beats and Eats. We have residences, and, you know, if they have an appointment or something, you know, they just bypass the lines and go where they have to go. So I think we can make special accommodation if anyone, you know, if there's a few people that have a doctor's appointment on a Saturday, that's not a reason not to have the event. So I think we can work through that, and we can give that direction, I think, as a commission, to say, "Hey, this looks good, but we'd like you to, you know, work on a couple of small things." I think overall, this is an amazing event, vegans and vodka. I mean, this is, I know Chef Johnny's been thinking about this for a while, and he's really done a lot of legwork. I mean, this is a, I want to give credit to Mr. Bees and Chef Johnny, because he's really been a champion for celebrating Royal Oak and bringing a lot of positivity to the city. We have the new alley opening up back there, which is going from literally a garbage hauling area to a place to celebrate the arts in the future, and really starting to bring people to our community. It's a great gathering space, honestly, with minimal impact in this area, utilizing that smaller space. I think it helps the businesses along that core there, and it really is a testament to something unique to Royal Oak. I'm not aware of very many vegan and vodka celebrations that aren't just for vegans, but for everybody. I mean, if you like food, and you like really high-quality food, and it just happens to be vegan, this is also an event for you, too. So I really applaud the efforts of the Restaurant Association, Chef Johnny, Mr. Bees, and all the other associated businesses. So I think this is a really good thing for the city. However, you know, if there are a few kinks that we want to give direction on to say, "Hey, you know, try to resolve these issues prior to launch," I think that's acceptable. I didn't get any complaints. No, I don't, I don't recall anybody reaching out to me, making me aware. I'm not sure if city staff got anything. Assistant City Manager, Chief O'Donoghue, not sure what the call you have. We'll figure that out. Okay, so, you know, for made aware of things, I think we have a pretty strong track record of, I mean, you're not going to be 100% out of the gate, but if we're made aware of things, we obviously work to, you know, make those small things right for the parties. That's a small give, so Commissioner Dubac.
Yeah, just, I think, you know, we have a record of doing events pretty well in this city, and certainly, as things are new, there's hiccups that need to be worked out. It's helpful if those business owners actually let the city know, or other people know, and not just anonymously tip folks off. Like, it'd be helpful to know who exactly.
Yeah, if we knew a few days ago, the city staff.
Organize, do your job to adjust these issues, and I'm happy to make the most from the direction that those issues be addressed, you know, in the organizing event.
Right, and I appreciate that, too, and I'm not, I'm not saying that Chef Johnny doesn't do an incredible job with his, with his events. It's, when I get three phone calls in, on a Sunday night, I really, you know, it's Sunday night, and I'm trying to prep for a meeting, you know, and they're all yelling at me because they just saw this, and it was, it is a holiday weekend, and for this to come out, you know, and people weren't paying attention like maybe they would or should, but we, if we can do a better job with communicating with the businesses in the area, the affected businesses, and maybe have some kind of written acknowledgement that, you know, X, Y, and Z were spoke, was spoken to at Restaurant A, Restaurant B, whatever the case may be. I don't know, that's not my expertise, but I would think that having something, some kind of record would be.
Well, what we don't know is if that record actually happened or not. I mean, people say they weren't notified, and they, you know, they could have not been notified, they could have missed the mail, they could have, I mean, we don't know, there's always, communication is odd in that realm. Communication is odd in that realm. So, you know, given the benefit of the doubt to the organizers, I'm sure they did their best to reach out to these individuals, and sometimes things slip through the cracks. I mean, you're trying to manage a lot. But I think that now that we know, it would have been helpful eight hours ago if we knew about it. Maybe staff could have come a little bit earlier and said, hey, we resolved these issues prior to us putting it on the table, but we're here today and we can fix it. I don't think, I don't know, staff, do these things seem like insurmountable to remedy?
Chiefs Department.
No, it's, no, the only issue I see is if the recycling area is on private property, without permission, we couldn't use it anyway.
Yeah.
So that's easily resolved.
Yeah, we just move it somewhere.
Hey, every business will have access off of Main Street, so nobody's losing parking other than a handful of meters is the only parking that actually is going.
And if we need access through the back for an elevator, if people have an appointment on our system, come in, you have an appointment, go to your appointment.
I don't think there's any, there's no fee to get in, is that correct?
Yeah.
So there's no issue with people getting in. They can still get to the business.
Chief, just to clarify, because you mentioned that no one would lose parking, that is a private parking lot that's right there on Third and, and at that, at the alley. And if I'm understanding it right, Third's going to be closed off.
Yes.
So accessing that parking lot.
Yeah, okay. I did misspeak. That, that small lot, I think there's a handful of spots that would, they wouldn't have access to that.
Is there some way to accommodate them?
Not if there's going to be people roaming, but not if we got the event, we have to, we have to close off the event because it's, they're serving liquor, so we have to have clear boundaries. And you can't, we can't allow vehicles to go with, set them up.
Can we bag a few spots in front of the, on Main Street?
We could work out something with the, whoever needs it, for sure.
And possibly we can check with the doctor's office on Friday afternoon or whatever time it closes on Friday to see, it might be closed Thursday, to see what they have scheduled.
Yeah, we can, we can bag a few spots and say, you can park here if you have an, I mean, there's things we can do. There's, it's easily solved. It's just whatever's amicable to the business owner, the property owner, and making sure people are safe at the event and really extracting, you know, the positivity out of this for everyone involved. Commissioner Dubac.
Just curious if Chef Johnny's been approached by any of these concerns in his organizing the event. Can we ask?
Well, we don't have a motion on the table, so I'd be willing if, unless there's objection here, and if Chef Johnny wishes to come up and speak a little bit about, I was going to have him do it anyways, even if it was on consent, consent. Maybe you want to come up and say a few words?
Well, the, the issue of the, the recycling was raised this morning, and we are making a plan to move it out of that parking lot.
Good.
And move it north of the alley by Second Street. So I think we've got that issue resolved. And we have talked into the vast majority of the business owners. I personally talked to the law firm in that building. I talked to the landlord today, who personally told me that he was going to talk to PNC Bank and the architectural firm in there. I got a permission written off by the owner of the Sullivan Building today. So I think that a lot of the people you probably heard from were probably part of that, that area bar, that parking lot. And we also agreed that although we're going to start setting up the, the event earlier in the day on Friday, we are going to leave access to that particular parking lot until four o'clock in the afternoon.
Okay.
So that they won't have to, which most of those business owners are closed by four o'clock in the afternoon. So we're, have every intention of accommodating their, their issues with that.
So it sounds like we're 99% there.
Pardon me?
We're 99% there on these two issues.
I think we are, yeah.
Thank you for spearheading that and, and going ahead and working with the business owners.
We want it to be amicable for everybody, absolutely.
Can you give us some positive words on vika and vodka? I mean, this stuff, good, but let's, you got a couple minutes here to give us a great plug and the hard work you've done.
You know, something that kind of grew out of conversations with a lot of business owners about what we can do to help develop the culinary image of Royal Oak and what we can do to help, you know, bring people into the community to also see the great active space that we're creating in the alley between the Henry Ford Medical Center and our, and our businesses. So, you know, it's with those intentions that this is created. And, you know, there is no major vegan festival in, in, in greater Detroit area. There's a, there's a convention, I believe, out of Novi, but there is no festival. So it gives us an opportunity to create a festival that's unique. It's a growing market segment. People that are eating plant-based diets is a very growing market segment, especially within the millennial generation. So, you know, it really gives us an opportunity to kind of take ownership of that, that festival. And, and, you know, when we first came up with the idea, it was like, you know, every time they have Pigs and Whiskey in Ferndale, it draws people from Royal Oak, you know, and we need to compete. So the idea was to try to take something that's more contemporary in the marketplace and put an event together that we can compete and show that we can be as cutting-edge and as cool and as culinarily advanced as these other communities, which we are and can be. And so, you know, it kind of grew from there and gained popularity, and the Restaurant Association took ownership of it, which is, I think, a positive thing. And it's really going to be a tasting. You know, we're going to have a tasting of all kinds of different vegan foods through many restaurants that are going to participate. The vodka port is actually going to be a craft cocktail contest. It's not going to be just drinking straight vodka. This is going to be people presenting very creative cocktails made with vodka, which is also a very strong market trend, is craft cocktails right now. And I really believe that this is the kind of festival that will put Royal Oak in a different light from a culinary standpoint, from a restaurant standpoint, from a craft cocktail standpoint. And these are the trends that are driving the greater metropolitan Detroit area right now. And it allows us to kind of leapfrog, have a lot of people in that area. So we're very enthusiastic about it, and I think we got a lot of people behind it.
John, nice work.
Okay.
Nice work. Any questions for John? Any? Well, we don't have a motion on the table. Commissioner Dubac?
I move for approval along with direction that staff see to, that these couple of tweaks are seen to.
Okay, motion. We have a second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right, this brings us to Consent Agenda L, Approval of Park Mobile Agreement. Commissioner Dubac.
Yeah, I just, a couple things on this. And this has been a work in progress since we rolled out the experiment a few years back. I guess what I wanted to note was, you know, every once in a while, we'll get pinged or someone will post, you know, an image where they got a ticket, but they were, they were, they were paid up, right? And it makes it sound like it's a failure of a system. But am I reading this right, that we did 27,566 transactions in May alone?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you have any idea what the error rate has been? How many folks are, are coming to us saying that they, they did receive, are we tracking that data?
We are, we are not, because oftentimes the error, when they take the post, they don't show you a copy of the license plate for the vehicle they thought they were driving.
Right.
So that's been the biggest error that we found, is people put in their wife's car or whatever other car they're driving, because this app allows you to pre-program the number of cars that you have. And if you hit the wrong button, you successfully paid for the vehicle home in your garage.
And we'll issue a ticket because we're running the plate against the.
We're running the plate against the.
I was actually at the Police Department one day for a meeting, and I was just hanging around and talking, and a gentleman came in and he was angry. And he's like, I got a ticket, look, I paid for it. And politely looked at it and said, okay, that's, you know, obviously we feel for you. Let's take a look, you know, this shouldn't happen, you know, that's not perfect. And our PD looked at it and they're like, so, the reason why you got the ticket is you put an O in there and it's a zero on your plate. So when they scan it, the, the computer doesn't know the difference between an O and a zero, you know what I mean? And so, you know, they're not checking every single number. It's scan, doesn't match.
Right.
Must be a new drive. So once he found that out, we remedied the ticket for him, you know, and he went away like, oh, well, thank you for explaining. I'm glad we fixed this error, you know. So there are some quirks in it that I even witnessed firsthand.
Well, and that's what I want to make sure we're tracking is, I mean, that's a lot of transactions. And I think there's a perception that there's a massive error, right? But.
There is not.
There is not. Oh, are we, so are we just tracking it anecdotally, or do people come to the courthouse in the department?
If I could just, if I could add.
Sure.
Since we've hired our new Parking Systems Director, we, we are starting to track it all. The, the problem we had is too many, there were too many different areas you could go to, to address a concern.
Right.
And now we've got it all streamlined, so he's dealing with all of them. We will be able to provide that data moving forward.
Great.
A vast, vast majority are user error. We have had a handful, and it's a very, very small number where there was a connectivity issue, but it's a fraction of a fraction of a percent. Overall, Park Mobile works very well. The issue is the zeros and Os, and when they put the wrong plate in, it's a vast majority, but.
And it might even be better than human error.
Well, we, we're also all working on kind of rethinking the way we handle these tickets. So there, there's, everyone, it's clear if there's a problem, we want people coming to the Police Department because we're the ones who can actually resolve it, not, not going to court or whatever. But that's, that's a process that we'll be rolling out here in the next few weeks. We think it's, it's a much better solution to handling when there is a user error, but so they clearly paid. It's coming up with a more fair system to, to address those.
Is that something we can print on our envelopes or something we can print on our tickets, like questions or concerns, or think you received this ticket in error, call this number?
That's, that's part of it, but it's establishing, I mean, I'll tell you, we're looking at establishing a parking violation bureau within the Police Department. So the violations go through the Police Department before they go to court.
Okay.
So we're open 24. It, it's basically to improve the customer service aspect of it.
Yeah.
And there would be new instructions. It's something we're, we're not ready to do now yet, but we're working on it.
I mean, everything about this is intended to make life easier for everybody, so I just want to make sure we're being vigilant about seeing that through. And I think it's, it's really working now. And the other question I had was, are we finding greater compliance? Are fewer tickets being written now that people have this ability to pay mobily?
Yes.
Are we, are we seeing that impact? Because that, we, we did this on the premise, people want to be compliant. We just need to make it easier and more convenient to be compliant. And are, are we seeing that?
I, I don't know if I can agree with that exactly. We don't know yet.
Okay. I thought we had in the last, in the city budget meeting, we looked at the parking fund, and the number of tickets that we had written had gone down from last year. And it could, well, okay, your point's valid because we don't know if it's because of parking garages.
Correct.
Or is it because of Park Mobile?
Right.
But overall, the number of parking tickets has gone down substantially in the city. I don't have those numbers, but I thought, I mean, it was like a 25%, 30% reduction, something like that. Don't quote me papers, it's in the budget. We can get you that number, but.
Yeah, that was last year.
That was last year from me.
Okay.
It's changing.
Okay, great, thanks.
Oh, wow. I'll go with Commissioner Macy, then Commissioner Labasser.
Oh. So the zero O problem has happened more than that one time? Is that true? That's like, it's like a repeating problem?
Yes.
Okay, so the former software engineer in me says Park Mobile can fix it like that. Like, there's not going to be that much repeat of an entire plate number if you substitute the zero or an O, let that be an or instead of a single choice. I don't know, I guess. I feel, I feel confused that we know that this is a known problem and Park Mobile can't fix it.
We are talking to Park Mobile, make it more clear, because it's a problem for both our enforcement and the, the user.
Yeah.
But, and they seem receptive to kind of working on, working on that solution.
Seems like if they could take a picture of their license plate, it would be better.
What's that? Well, it does take a picture of your license plate.
No, but the, the user could, he's saying, right?
The user can preload his license plate into his account.
You know, the thing to remember is, if you have a zero in your license plate, but you have an O, the violation's given to an O, you didn't actually get that ticket even though it was on your, went to somebody else who's actually got the O. So it's kind of a.
Double whammy.
Yeah, it's, but.
You don't have to pay the ticket.
But I, I think the vast majority of errors are someone pays, they have several plates preloaded, and they just press the wrong plate.
Use a different car.
Than, than they have. That is, I would say, probably 90% of the errors.
Commissioner Labasser.
Yeah, I was going to raise the same question that Commissioner Macy wrote, raised, and that is, it ought to be able to be a simple programming matter to basically have the computer treat a zero as either a zero or an O. The likelihood that you're going to have one person who has the license plate with the O, who's parked in our parking area and didn't pay for it, is, is, is almost non-existent.
Yeah.
But if, if we can eliminate concerns and problems and anticipate a certain amount of potential user error that's common like that, save a lot of grief, a lot of folks who are leaving with a bad taste in their mouth because of the system.
Well, not just that, but I mean, you have the Police Department that has to handle it, and there's a cost to addressing these complaints. And like you said, most people are honest, right? And they go in and unless they have a buddy that has identical plate with a zero O and they want to, and they want to scam that $3 a week, okay, it's yours. We're not going to worry about it. If you want to go through all that effort of getting multiple license plates.
We don't want them having to go in there to correct something.
Right.
Like this.
But what you're saying is like, hey, if you have zero and O, treat them the same, you know. So somebody has a, they mistyped the number, what's the likelihood that, you know, it shows that they paid on either one, what's the chance that they paid, they're in that spot? Yeah, it makes sense. But I think, I mean, the chief, you explained, like, hey, look, this is a pain in the butt for us, so we're on it, and our folks are working on it. We're working with Park Mobile to address it. So if that's the solution or if it's some other solution, they're going to, they're on it.
And having Keith Fry here, who's, who's got one person dealing with, so it's not 15 people with their hands in, and he is working on all of these issues now at the same time. So he's doing a great job.
Commissioner Dubac.
Yeah, I just, I think my big takeaway is, I wouldn't have guessed this is the number of transactions that we're doing a month. So we're doing 270, 27,000 plus a month. So if there's 270 people having a bad experience, it's still .001 that we're working on. So like, we're driving toward a pretty good error rate and customer experience, right? And so we should, we'll keep working to improve it, but I think there's a really good takeaway. I had no idea that there was this many people using it. So that's really great data, and the more data we can mine from this to make it even better, you know, then that's a benefit to our residents and our visitors. So with that, I'll move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Dubac. Is there a second? Discussion with Commissioner Perush. With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right, this brings us back to the regular part of our agenda. Excuse me, item number seven, Approval of Trans, excuse me, I'm sorry, everyone. Approval of Transfer of Uncategorized Funds From Royal Oak Opportunity to Serve to Royal Oak Civic Foundation. Ms. James here?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. So back in the spring when the City Commission approved all the filing for documents for the incorporation of the Royal Oak Civic Foundation, one thing we had yet to do is actually identify the Royal Oak Civic Foundation as the successor to Roots in an official capacity. So that's one of the things we need to do tonight. That way, we can deal with some of these, what we're calling uncategorized donations. These are donations that have come in over the years that weren't tied to a specific organization or purpose, something like the Animal Shelter Commission for the Arts. Right now, we're at about $9,000, so we're not talking about a huge amount of money. But so what we're looking at doing is taking that uncategorized money that has been donated for no specific purpose, transferring it to the Civic Foundation, so they have some seed money to begin the work of the foundation.
Any questions, Mr. Bazan? Commissioner Labasser.
Is the Civic Foundation ready to accept other contributions as well?
The Civic Foundation now has the ID number, the federal ID number. The next step is getting the official 501(c)(3) status from the IRS, but the city can still currently accept donations.
Okay, they could accept donations. They may not yet be tax deductible, but they can accept.
I believe they are tax exempt now, now that we do have that ID number. It's just kind of on a tentative basis, so that if anything did come back, and Mr. Gillum could probably correct me more on this if I'm wrong, but if it did come back that there was an issue with the 501(c)(3) status, then it wouldn't, then whoever made the donation may have to come back and file something else.
If I could clarify, I believe all donations to the city are tax deductible. We were moving for the 401(c)(3) because some charities require it to be a 401(c)(3), so it is a deductible expense.
Right. Commissioner Dubac.
It's been a long time coming. I think it's going to be a great asset. I'll move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Dubac. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion. Just add, nice work to the team. Nice work, Jim. Glad to get us on board. And this will really help the city be more agile with some of the miscellaneous needs that we have to keep the community rolling. So with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right, this brings us to item number eight, which is the interim City Manager Update. Mr. Gillum.
Mayor and City Commissioners, I think this item was listed primarily for update purposes pursuant to the direction that I had received from the commission before. I've had discussions with Mr. Johnson, the former city manager, about returning to the city on a. city on a contractual basis while the city is engaged in a formal search for a new city manager. Those discussions are making progress. If the commission is satisfied with the progress that we're making in those discussions, which will continue later this week, then no action tonight is necessary. On the other hand, if for some reason, the commission wasn't satisfied with the progress of those negotiations, I wanted to provide you with, publicly with information about the interim managers list from the Michigan Municipal Executives, if the commission wanted to start identifying candidates to interview for an interim position.
Questions for Mr. Gillum.
Assuming for sake of argument that nothing comes of discussions with Mr. Johnson, what steps, if any, do you need for us to take tonight in order to pursue one of these prospects here?
Well, if the, if the commission desires, the commission could identify an individual or individuals tonight. There would be an interest in interviewing. I think the logical group, the logical contact, point of contact would be the Human Resources Department, to contact that individual or those individuals to determine if they were interested. If that's the route the commission wants to go, then I think you'll have to have some discussion about who would be conducting the interviews, and maybe get some ideas to when those interviews would be conducted as well. Otherwise, if you're willing to wait for probably a couple weeks, I think I would have a firm answer for Mr. Johnson by the end of this week, as to whether or not we would have something that we could bring back to you for formal consideration in an upcoming meeting.
All right, I don't see any motions or action by the commission here. So I think we'll take a status quo and see what Mr. Johnson comes back with, and we'll stay apprised. And then you'll inform us about what the next steps will be based on any new information we have from Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, we can treat this as an update tonight, and I'll keep you posted.
Okay.
As to what goes forward from here.
Perfect. All right. Item number eight, Request to Set Special City Commission Meeting Work Session on Marijuana Legalization.
Mayor, City Commission, we have the results of the Cobalt Community Research Survey. We obviously know how the vote went for recreational marijuana or adult-use marijuana. We believe the next step is to discuss the process for implementing commercial adult-use marijuana businesses within Royal Oak, based off the Doodle Poll, Monday, July 22. Prior to the regularly scheduled city commission meeting seems best. There's a resolution for you. I would point out that we purposely kept the July 22 meeting extremely light, so with the idea that this might take some time.
Okay. Questions? Commissioner LaVassar?
A couple. First, I just want to clarify the location. Is it expected that we would start here in this room, not the neighboring room? Is this room available?
It says City Commission Chambers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. And would we be able to televise that?
Yeah, that was a question that Mr. Wilson had earlier today, so...
The only other concern I would have, I know we have the survey results, I want to make sure that those are included on the link when we're preparing, when we're anticipated talking about this, so that we can review those well in advance.
I think get all the information out there for the public that we would have ahead of a work session, if appropriate. It's not a problem.
I think that brings up a good point or a good question, Commissioner. I mean, I've previously provided the city commission with short summaries of both the Medical Marijuana Facilities Act and also the Adult Recreational Act, pointing out some of the similarities and some of those differences. I think we'd be planning to provide those to you again, so you have those to refer to. The survey, as you've indicated. In addition, last Wednesday, the state came out with its emergency rules regarding recreational slash adult-use marijuana. I'm still kind of chewing on those, but I'll try to have some materials for you on those as well, for purposes of reference. If there's anything else that you're aware of, well, the other thing I would add is, the staff in the Planning Department has developed just a working draft of a zoning ordinance that you could refer to. And I think there's a lot of fill-in-the-blanks in there, but it would be a starting point for discussion. So in addition to any of those four things, if there are things that you know tonight that you would like, please let me know. Or if you think of things in the meantime that might be beneficial, or if there are specific questions that you have, as you're reading or going through other materials, if you can let me know, and we'll try to compile all that and provide you with as much information as we can for the work session on the 22nd.
I seem to recall, within the last week or so, seeing that there was some Court of Appeals decision involving spot zoning that had to do with, I believe, medical marijuana. And would just want to make sure that we're not doing anything that could cause us trouble in that respect.
Okay, to be honest, I didn't have a check, a chance to check my advance sheets today, but I will take a look for that. I know that there was a decision that came out of the Court of Appeals fairly recently involving the, a local community's attempt to impose additional building and code requirements upon marijuana, medical marijuana facilities. And that was struck down by the Court of Appeals. But I'll take a look for the other, the spot zoning issue that you're talking about, too.
Anything anyone can think of right now? Commissioner Perush?
I'm familiar with the spot zoning case, just because there was a summary drafted for the property law section newsletter within the last week or so. I can't recall the name of the case, but it's specifically, the Court of Appeals specifically called the community's action "spot zoning." But they also acknowledged the fact that there was an also, it was really an underhanded attempt by the community to say, "No, we don't want this at all." And they tried to disguise it as a form of a zoning issue. But it's definitely a relevant case, and it gives us some clear indications of things that we can and cannot do. And when I get back home, I can find the name of the case, and I can email it to Dave, so he doesn't have to hunt for it. And then he can share it with everybody else. I don't think the opinion is very long. And it's, my recollection is that it's fairly easy, an easy read. It's not like 20 pages of legal jargon, so, but I can get to you the name of the case.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Dubac?
Just some background on, I've read about communities where they have, say, want to do one or two licenses. They'll have, you know, a whole group of folks who are clamoring for those licenses. And no matter what way they choose, they end up getting sued by all the disgruntled parties who don't get a license. And I'm wondering if anyone has found a way to safeguard against that. Is it, you pick all the qualified shops and then just do a random drawing? Has anyone found a viable option to insulate themselves against the inevitable inevitability of those lawsuits?
Secondhand information, that's what I'm hearing, that you establish some base qualifications. And then among the applicants that meet the base qualifications, you have basically a random draw. Yeah.
Okay. So like, the qualifications would be measurable. Like, do you have this, or do you have that? Have you been in business? You know, do you have any record, or do you not have a record? Like, things that you can measure, not, you know, are they good operators? Very subjective, qualitative things you keep out.
Community benefit, I mean, some maybe vague terms, yeah.
Yeah, whatever viable models people have identified, to the extent that someone's pioneered this already, I prefer not to make the same mistakes other communities did.
Yeah. Right. Commissioner Gibbs?
I have some experience with this. So, Mr. Gillum, maybe tomorrow or Wednesday, we can chat for a few minutes, and I can kind of give you the rundown. And I'll just, I'll leave it at that. It's sort of complicated. You're going to want a notepad and all kinds of other things.
If you could maybe, either tonight or in the morning, maybe shoot me an email.
Sure.
Let me know what would be a good time to call you.
Okay, that's perfect. I'll do that.
Okay. Commissioner Perush?
Before they get lost in the shuffle of all of these issues, I think one of the ways communities have dealt with the issue of how many licenses and who gets it and who doesn't get it, is very artfully designating distances from certain types of, like, you can't have a marijuana business within 1,000 feet of a school, or 1,000 feet of a church, or 1,000 feet of whatever, or 500 feet. And if you impose those kinds of distances over your zoning map, it effectively cuts out a whole lot of areas and leaves you really with only perhaps, you know, four eligible areas to have any type of marijuana business. So that's, I think, how some communities have gotten around this picking and choosing arbitrary argument, because they can simply say, "Look, we don't allow them within 1,000 feet of whatever. This is the only area that's allowed. That's it. We can't have anymore." So that's another way, that's another approach, I think, that we might take in our community.
Yeah, they secure the real estate, and then they meet, you know, we have other, some minimum qualifications, like Mr. Gillum said, then it's whoever comes and has a business plan and has the property in that area that meets the zoning requirements, then they're the ones that are eligible. First serve, almost.
I have some experience with that, too. So I will, we can throw that into the conversation. Okay?
Sounds good.
Commissioner Macy?
So that makes me think it might be nice to have a map with churches and schools marked on it. Is that something we can have available?
Churches, schools, and residential areas, I would recommend.
Yeah, a zoning map, sorry.
With zoning map.
I mean, one of the things that we heard in the survey was, people said that they'd like to see a regulated, very similar to alcohol-serving establishments. So what does that map look like right now for alcohol-serving establishments as sort of a baseline proxy? Because alcohol-serving establishments, I think, fall under those same categories, like 1,000 feet from a church. Maybe not, maybe. I don't know. But that might be, if we have a map already, you know, to say, "Okay, this is what it would look like, this is what it looks like for alcohol." You know, it's a proxy to at least, you know, have on display to say, "Okay, if this is our starting point, based on the Cobalt survey, what tweaks do we want to make to it that makes sense?"
I think the, to a certain point, though, you might be talking about apples and oranges, because for Class C license establishments, they can't be located within X number of feet of a church if the church doesn't agree or doesn't support the license.
Yeah.
So, we can see what the Planning Department can put together.
Yeah. Something, I think, is a good baseline that kind of takes that input from the survey and says, "Okay, based on survey input, if we're going through a zoning approach, this is kind of what our recommendation would be, what it would look like." I think that's good. I think it's a really good idea. Commissioner Macy, you had that idea. Super smart.
Well, you know me.
Any other things we think that we should take back and bring to the work session? Commissioner Gibbs?
I might be able to have Craig Aronoff, the attorney who has spoken here a number of times, be available. He can decide if he's available, but I can extend an offer to him if you, if the commission feels that it might be worthy.
Commissioner Gibbs?
Commissioner Gibbs, I appreciate that. And I, obviously, Mr. Aronoff, I, he was here for the prior work session, and I spoke with him afterwards. He's very knowledgeable in the area. My only potential concern with that is, if he has been consulting at all with anyone that might be submitting an application for any kind of a license here in the city of Royal Oak, I'd hate to, I'd hate to make anyone think that there was any kind of inside baseball going on. So, I mean, I, again, it's not that I don't trust Mr. Aronoff. Again, he's very knowledgeable. I mean, if he wanted to come and speak during public comment, I would have absolutely no problem with that at all. But I would be concerned if we're in any way relying upon him as any kind of a...
An expert.
...of an expert, when he might have been consulting with people who might have business eventually pending in front of the city.
I'll relay the information for all of us. Thank you.
And if he has different thoughts, and he wants to give me a call, I'd be happy to talk to him, too.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions, input, thoughts related to this topic?
Do we have a motion yet?
No, we need a motion on the table for the resolution here for the 22nd.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Perush, second by Commissioner Gibbs. Discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, this brings us to the end of our agenda. Notwithstanding anything else to the betterment of our community, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
A motion by Commissioner Dubac, supported by, seconded by Commissioner Gibbs. Discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We're adjourned.